All right, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
I would like to add discussion about the glass for the...
Security.
Thank you, security glass.
Okay. So you will put that at six point two.
Second.
Motion carries. Now, open up for public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close public comments. And if there's anything on the consent agenda that we'd like to uphold for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Then that will take us to six point one. Rick, do you maybe want to talk about this?
Sure, I'll make a few introductory comments. We happened to be visiting with Bruce Johnson one day. He was making his routine rounds and I think Janelle, in fact, said, "Boy, it'd be great if you guys could do some utility billing work for us." And I think he suggested, "Well, it's something you should look into because we're doing it for a number of cities in the area anyway." And so I did encourage him to give us a proposal. And really what it comes down to is recognition that outsourcing certain rote functions wouldn't be a bad idea, especially since it's for all practical purposes a break-even proposition. And I think the biggest benefit to be gained by this is that it'll free up some time for your very limited staff of one, Janelle, to address more significant matters. And I'm going to have Bruce speak a little bit to the service to be offered, but most importantly is who are the other clients and the benefit they see associated with this. So my recommendation is that we proceed with this tonight if we can, but go ahead, Bruce.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, council, thanks. Thank you for having me to come in. Actually, what happened is that I was coming back from the city of Carver after doing their water bills.
Okay.
And our connection with Carver is that Brent Merrick, who was the administrator with Winston, who we've been doing the water bill for probably nine years. It's something to do with data, Brent. It turned into, when Brent came as administrator in Carver, he asked us if we could continue to do it for that city. So with that, I'm coming back and just one of my first visits was, hey, so, well, this is Janelle and then Rick. And it turned into, when they heard where I was, it was like, "Will you do that again?" I said, "Of course, salesman, if I am, I do." So as it turns out, that led to that conversation, which led to a proposal, which has been being carried through meetings. So far, we should actually be out talking to more cities, but this would be a great town to add to our revenue point cities that we do water bills for. Any other questions you got, I'll be glad to answer.
What other cities are you doing for?
Okay, it's Winston and it's Carver.
Okay.
And like I said, we just happen to have the equipment. It's all about the equipment. They can take your information that Janelle would send us and convert it over. So I think what you're putting out right now is more like a postcard type situation, but we do it in a letter and that's what everything would be. And they seem to find that beneficial, the two towns we operate. For some reason, Winston does do color on their bill. That cost does not necessarily need to be, Carver's happy with a black and white. But they do do, when they want to, they add an occasional newsletter. Lately, it's been pretty steady, but it's a chance for them to get the word out to the residents.
Is that an upcharge that they add?
Yeah, there would be. It's a quarter or sheet to add to. But the postage is already taken care of. Speaking of postage, we are able to, some of the benefits that we could take for you is that we do a full mail merge. So we're usually down about a dime to twelve cents in bulk for first glass. It does have to go back into the city, so whether we use your permit at first and send it, it still leaves there and goes back into the city and then comes back because they have to register it. But at the same time is that we'll build that extra day in there so that they get out at the right time.
So right now, so we would continue to read them all, download the information, that we would send it off?
Just printing and mailing.
So you're just printing and the mailing?
And one thing about you guys, it's the middle of the month, pretty much for you. Our other two are at the end of the month. So the middle of the month really works nice for us. So anything we got, you guys are benefit. Normally, when we take in a mail list, it's seventy-five dollars per mail list. We only charge you three times a year for this mail list that we take in. Because nobody changes, I mean, obviously, whenever she sends in a new mail list, if somebody added. But at least you know that we don't charge like seventy-five dollars per time for twelve times. We just figure out a amount that kind of works for us for taking in this data and doing that. But overall, it's just a print and then, like I said, eventually I could see it where you would be able to let the permit ride, unless you had some other mailing that we don't know about that actually, and also if it became a deal where you had something, we'd mail it for the cost, you know? Because that's what our gain on postage is, is the cost. It's all up to our customer cost.
So how long does it typically take us, when you have the information, to get the cards printed? Do what you need to do with them when they're sent out?
I think by now, it's pretty much a full day.
A full day?
Yeah.
And I'm assuming it'll take you about the same?
I mean, yeah, from the time Janelle sends over the information, one day later, we'll be out. I think we're eight hundred percent in that area. We're doing fourteen hundred in Carver and then I think it's around eleven hundred or so with those two cities. It basically comes in that day and the next day it'll go.
They are two or three days, not weeks.
Right, no, not by any, no return.
How does the data get transferred? How does the data get transferred? Is it software or?
Yeah, it's all software.
It's all pretty much?
Yeah.
So how much time of yours is it going to take to get all that information from what, from reading the meters? To put it into the Excel spreadsheet to get it over to you?
I kind of figured a couple of hours. I mean, there is ongoing things that you'd be taking care of already, like what I've been doing these days. Downloading the meter program through the handheld, they go out, they read the meters. I upload it, I print the reports and I have to go through the reports of just any meter reading, didn't read. All of that would still be the same, but that really is about a couple of hours. Sending that to a program really isn't any different than me printing the report. So it's just a matter of getting, you know?
So how much is that in the file or how much actual time would this save you?
Quite a bit. You know, it's mostly, so like all of what I can probably get done by ten o'clock in the morning, by that time, I'm really just starting the process of print. And, you know, the post office is closed, so two. And then usually sometime in the afternoon that I can run over there.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that, if I may. There's no question that there will be a time savings. I wish it was two, three, four, five days, but it's not. But what it really does is, you know, six to eight hours in this size organization is pretty significant. And not only are you going to be able to have other very important tasks done, whether they be customer service or whatever, but you're going to greatly reduce the amount of stress in the office. Because we've got to get the bill out, but you're dealing with people at the counter, you're dealing with a city administrator that might need help. It's just, the list is endless. There's not a lot of low-level fruit that you can go after in this size office to make some substantive changes. And this is just one of several that I believe I'm going to recommend before I leave here. Now, if I'm asked to leave before I make those recommendations, so be it. But rather than coming in and saying, "We need additional staff," we surely should look at these opportunities before we do that. And we both picked up on it very quickly. And I know Brent well enough to know he thinks it's a good decision, so.
And I just wanted to make sure it was saving you like five hours as opposed to one or two hours.
No.
It would be an incredible saving of time, not to mention just, like you said, the stress because you really have to focus on this and it's difficult when you're interrupted a lot. I think a big savings too is you're going to get a letter in the mail. And I won't get all those, I never receive my bill because they get lost, they get stuck. And, you know, postcards are constantly being lost in the mail. And I think the look of this, people are really going to like it.
Do you have an example of what they look like?
We, I did for Carver in Carver and then...
Can we put, because we always put like a little memo at the bot on them? Can we add, I mean, is that something that's easy to be added to the letters that is easier to read? Because otherwise I never see the memos, have the time on, I'm not paying attention.
Yeah, I think it's well worth it just for the time, the stress, the time.
And then all the information will be the same? The usage, the breakdown of the fees, the...
There may even be additional information on there that will come from the reports that the postcard just doesn't really have enough room to put on there. The opportunity to send out newsletters monthly or even every other, yeah.
And do they add it with their utility bill? So they get the utility bill and the newsletter at the same time?
Right, correct, right. And what we do, this is how Carver wants to have it. They didn't do it first this way, but even the people that don't get utility bills, they even have to send out two hundred other ones to them. That's how valuable they found the newsletter to be. So it's in with the utility bill, which is the actual residents that's paying the water bill. But there are people in the apartments and all that, they looked up the addresses and got those too. Don't have to do that at first, I understand, but can you do notice some people not getting information?
Well, what I also like is that people can have a part, like they're returning the check with something.
You know, well, the postcards like that too, only it's small.
Well, it's just small. And then it's, you're not, I would not lose the...
Looked like the cost was about the same when you did ran the cost to them.
And we didn't even factor in toner, did we? Some of that stuff, we just didn't, we didn't have the time. So it is a break-even, in my opinion.
We're going to propose to stop this in trades that they, that's why they give us the mail merge. You, in order to be a mailer like us, you have to be like twenty-five, ninety-five percent compliant. And if you aren't, they kick you out of the mail merge system. And I don't know where we're at, but I know we're in the ninety-nine higher. Because they will, they actually monitor us to see how accurate we are on our mail.
Does it come with the envelope to mail it back?
That's an option, if we want to do it.
Put that on.
Our numbers did not reflect that.
Right, right.
But it's in the proposal, you know, you can read it. It says, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, there's a better chance that people actually putting the mail on it and sending it back than if, and if they happen to have an envelope and they don't need, we'll be a problem.
Here, how do we get a majority of them back? People drop them off? Do they put them in the front door?
That majority of them are inside drop box.
Okay, so they, how many, how many would you say use their own envelope and mail it? Are there menus?
Yeah, well, today Monday, I mean, today's the 10th, so I got to do that, so utility payments in the mail.
And you can still have an auto withdrawal?
Yes. That, those individuals or properties that are automatically, you know, with withdrawals, they are not included in the list that gets sent over there.
What?
Oh, wait a minute, I take that back. When I process them, it marks them automatically that on their bill, it'll just say auto pay, or auto withdrawn or something like that.
And then you don't even generate a bill for them?
No, that's not right.
Well, we would, it just, it'll stay on their bill that, yeah, that they get to see their amounts, but then it says like, "Do not page it," kind of the same. But I think it is easier to read. It gives them much easier read, the way your form is set up than the small board card.
I think proposal two is great. I don't think, I don't see any print envelope. If we don't have one now, most people are using it. I would say proposal two without the envelope.
It's not like it's a charitable contribution, it's, they have to pay it.
I think if we were having issues with people actually eating it in the mail or whatever, you add an envelope to help the system. But if people are, if that's what they're used to doing, then...
What does Carver do again, did you say?
They do a return envelope, but they're still, I mean, that's the nice part about this town. You're driving right by the street and dropping it off. So I can see where you get a high mountain and, but that's the way to keep it. Honestly, on that second envelope, it's no, nothing to us and we're just doing the cost on it anyway.
And the post it doesn't change if we add a newsletter like once a month, the post it's going to stay the same. So we're actually going to save money because now we don't have to pay additional postage for a newsletter. And we could actually probably do a newsletter once a month.
You commit to it.
And that would free up your time to do a newsletter. That'd actually be more beneficial than a utility, not once a month, I mean, it doesn't have to be once a month, but...
A lot of them are quarterly.
Quarterly.
Yeah, we, I mean, like, we do just that one piece for Water Town first, we put it out quarterly. It's just a one seater, but you've got to remember when we do that, then we can't go with the lighter paper. We, they got certain standards of postage that we have to have, the cover group test, so it can't go, but, you know, it's got to be more thick. So we got to print that on a cover stock, you know? So then you got a little more cost there and that type of stuff. But it comes with a flat, it's not gold. But everything that we did for a bid was considered on a year thing. There's no contracts, no nothing, it's something, I mean, obviously, something that's not right for Janelle, we're going to put it, we're going to get it straight because we want the business. And then second of all, is if something comes up that's in first of the year or something like that or sometime and you start working, well, there's no contract. But we want to make sure we do our job on our...
How long have you been with, we have a two year...
Okay, Winston for sure, it's been nine years since we got the new print machine. I would say Winston with Carver, five, six years and immediately, we did it. And in fact, it was, they got a bigger staff even back then. And it was like, okay, why do, why is he using an outside firm in order to do it? We've had, we've had great success there. They, we get other jobs because of it, so.
Any issues or concerns that, you know, the cities have had or you've had with the cities at all?
I, no, nobody, you know, we had one time when the data came wrong and then we just reprinted that boss, you know? If something even gets sent to us, we'll work it out with the city. I think they paid for the postage and we paid for the reprinting to get it back out. We pulled it off the next day. But the wrong data got sent to us and we don't know that part at the time. But the, believe it or not, they're first timers, so I'll be coming here and I'll say, "Okay, this is what we're sending out."
What's the earliest you can implement?
Next month? Yeah, yeah, because we have a two person print shop.
Couldn't do it by tomorrow, could you?
Honestly, I think we possibly could because it is the middle of the month. I will go as far as to say we could and then have about like four, five days. I mean, it's actually just us getting the information. And the only thing is, and we do have a print envelope machine that prints envelopes, so that's hard, that's hard we could do too. So you would, yeah, I'm willing to...
Just make it effective immediately if that's your desire and we'll...
Are you ready to go on that or?
Well, not yet.
Well, they can work that out.
Now we're changing the process on another process.
Without notifying anybody?
No, I'm fine with the public. You know, I'm just great.
No, but that was a little bit different. That was an acquisition versus, we're just changing the card.
I think they've targeted next month.
Yeah, I think we put on Facebook today and...
I don't want them to throw it away.
You got to be look different, keep an eye out for...
That's true, that's true, because some may throw it away.
Right, right. So I think given, given you're like that...
We can work through those details once we implement for sure.
Just so you know too, if you happen to have, like, if you're ready to use the newsletter, you know, a quarterly or so, and you did want us to make an attention, important information inside, we just add that either black and white or colored. But it does get a better opening. Obviously, they're going to open them in the utility bill, but just so they don't throw it away.
Yeah.
We got that option. The first bill, it would be no extra cost, we just put that.
Yeah, I think we should do that. The first two at least, maybe.
Like where you print on the envelopes, like utility bill and clothes?
Absolutely. But if Carver is on there and say, "This is your utility bill, we have no problem with it."
Yeah.
Just let you, be careful.
Any other questions? Anyone who would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept proposal number two. With the option of number three, if anyone meaning that we start with the August bill.
Second.
Is that including envelope?
No.
Okay, now, if number two had the envelope.
Proposal two, option three.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, good idea. Okay, six point two, glass in the front window.
I know a lot of guys who had talked about getting security glass up there and I'm just wondering, have you gotten quotes with, what's going on?
Well, we did initially have some quotes, but we tabled it. And I really haven't had a chance to try to get into it right now. So I intend to do so, but it's an important issue. I think there's other things you want to look at too. And it's my understanding, I think, every year you did kind of come up with a checklist.
And we did speak with James Elton, the inspector, a little bit on his recommendations. And he thought maybe in the trying being, cameras up, monitor. It was just kind of an initial suggestion from him. It was going to be a while for glasses to replace them.
Yeah, we'll come back with some. Well, you guys have time in the near future to discuss. I thought some of it was noise also, wasn't it?
Yeah, although that isn't the biggest issue.
Seemed to be.
But they picked on the last two weeks, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll come back with something in August probably, after the festival and the hiring. And then we'll have a little more time to listen to things.
Okay, Liz, let me answer your question, that's the way you need, okay. Any council reports or any other business? Any council reports?
The Rising Community Fest went well. There was a lot of cars here. Rick was here all day helping. It was nice.
Good, thank you.
I had a great time.
Much appreciated. Movie, not so much. There was like three people at it, so.
You'll just tie off at the park board, let them know how that went?
Liz, Ken.
Any Rick books?
Um, Rachel, okay. Could have, we could have used a lot more time to prepare the session too, so. But all the park board members turned out and all volunteered and did what they needed.
Good.
It was an adwill donation and I'm not sure how much we collected.
Good.
You heard fifteen, nine or twenty, so.
I assume they'll report all that back to you eventually for the park board. Perfect. All right, good. All right. Any other reports? We'll go to nine point one, presentation for Tour de Taka.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council members and staff in the community, thanks for having me here tonight. Tim Whitten here representing Tour de Taka, which probably comes through with a lovely tone. Today are here on the first Saturday in August, August fifth this year. Last year, there were four riders from Mayor. And if there's anybody else here tonight wanting to ride in or volunteer, we'll take you at tourdeTaka.org. Right now, I'll show highlight video of last year's event. So we'll go from the start right through the end and we'll see a little three-minute clip, two thousand sixteen, Anderson, Sam and Janelle too.
Here's the start.
This is the start at midnight.
High school, okay.
This year, there were three start locations. We're spreading people off to the shape of the start, there was thirty-five hundred plus riders last year. So spread them out and get out of there safer, quicker, et cetera. One finish and that's all that's going to turn into a high school on the first Saturday in August. So a hundred mile ride comes to Mayor and last year, about eight hundred and fifty riders that came to Mayor. So that's a sizable event coming through from the north to the south. They come from Water Town on twenty-three, one twenty-three and right in front of City Hall here. And then you get back up to twenty-five against the town and they head down to York. There are fourteen restaurants throughout the geography of all the rides, there are seven different districts. There's sixteen on the way up to thirty, all the way to one hundred miles. Right, that's right. Actually, we had an eighty-five-year-old gentleman do a fifty-seven mile ride and a little smaller young man did one hundred miles. You're here on a fast made of bike somewhere. Oh, my God, he works his fill up. Lots of money. Any riders from up here from here? TourdeTaka.org appears to be fun Saturday. Lots of bands, easy to greet, food, they're dressed up, it's a ride, not a race, so, you know, relax. Some people think it's a race, but frankly squash that, but there's been others who they think it is a race. It's just a ride and people enjoy themselves throughout the day. A long ride, one hundred will take people anywhere from four hours, believe it or not, to nine hours to complete. And sixteen mile will take people from one to three and a half hours to complete and anywhere in the middle of that. Twenty-three different cities this year that we go through. Mayor of the city being one of them and the thankful city staff and the community for allowing that to come through. A lot of support, last year, over five hundred volunteers made it happen. This is a real small event that rolls out each year, it's been happening. And people have worked, Carver County Sheriff supports, a lot of local fire department support. And we're happy to have all of that activity helping to make sure this event works and works well. This will be year number twelve for the event. Been a great year. All kinds of treats, like I said, volunteers do treat as well and get great sunglasses. This year, when you're riding or volunteering, so council members, I have to agree, I'd like to take a quick pickup of you guys over to get the flag here. So get them ready for your pickup.
Getting one.
And there is a little bit of first line, twenty-sixteen this year will be, twenty-seventeen on Saturday, August fifth.
Is there a stop in there?
There is not, there's no rest stop, but they stop. I'd keep them here though.
Sure.
Go over and rest and have a bite, grab a window store and whatever you do there, so they pull in.
For the twelfth, twelfth year?
Well, we're just...
How many riders first year?
First year, there were eight hundred and twenty or something like that. And I remember when I designed it, it was like, I got a whole other two hundred on year one. I was flattered after. And then just kind of crept out people from LA from there. It's a good number. It's, we're spread out on, I mean, if you're on the western side of the metro, southwest metro and west of the, you're going to see Tour de Taka that way.
I think you guys do a great job, great organization. It's come through Mayor many years and...
Yeah, I almost, I think it has in every year, so, fun and thank you.
You do a great job organizing it there. I've not once heard of any concerns in my six, seven years on council. Yeah, it's been, it's...
We try, all right, we try to make sure we're accommodating and safe and conversative and what we need to be working on.
Particularly up on the electronic sign, you know, at least a couple of weeks ahead of time, so people are aware that they're coming through on August fifth. I'm sure there's a time for it, so something like welcome to the front of August fifth or whatever. And I know that you put out the yard signs from town.
You get signs out early too, saying there's a ride, a ride coming through, so.
And I love going out there and sharing them all.
Oh, thanks.
Goodness gracious, I can never bike that far. Hundred miles.
We had, first we get back two years ago, it wasn't last year, two years ago, and he gave us some still water. And I remember talking to him at the finish and he was like, "God, this is great, this is so much fun." I was all the way out in western Minnesota. "Oh, really, where are you?" He said, "I was in Normal." A whole cage. You know, the perspective, when you're on a bike, you don't know really where you are. You're way, way out going to the shore.
All right, any other questions? Perfect, well, thanks. We look forward to the race and we'll quick adjourn and then we'll take, take photos. Yep, thank you. All right, I think that's everything. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
You know, Mike, I have some comments I'm writing relative to the next committee meeting. If you could give me ten minutes, then I can make copies of it. I just couldn't get them all done today.
Look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.